And I'm here representing Earth Alert. Although Earth Alert's primary focus is protecting endangered animals and plants that live on Ormond Beach, we are also sympathetic to the concerns of the residents of South Oxnard and Port Waini. Unfortunately, over the years, Ormond has sometimes become an attractive nuisance. There have been crimes and homeless encampments. As a result, no matter how the project partners perceive in the future, it is imperative that Ormond receive round-the-clock monitoring. History bears out the relationship between 24-hour human presence and reduced crime in the area. Through public information requests, I obtained the following information from the city of Oxnard. From 2003 to 2008, there were an average of almost 19 crimes a year documented on the beach. Then in mid-2008, the unsung hero of Ormond, Walter Fuller, took up residence in his trailer on Honor Road. From 2009 to 2013, crime dropped to an average of only six per year. I have this data on paper and will share it now. So to reiterate, nearly 19 crimes per year before Walter and only six after. We were able to speak to Walter today and he said that there has been absolutely no break-ins or other crime in the past few years. The one time he left for a community meeting, two clapper whale birds were shot and killed. So now he refuses to leave, and that is why he is not in attendance tonight. However, Walter is not a young man and he cannot remain at Ormond for very much longer. Earth Alert implores the project partners to come up with a long-term plan to ensure that Ormond is guarded 24 hours a day. As we continue to develop the OBRAP, let's make sure that includes such protection. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Hello, my name is Sophie Magalyon and I work with CAWS on environmental justice issues. Thank you for taking the time to hear my comments and holding this space in this public community meeting space. Our community has advocated for a gateway park and increased public access for Ormond Beach as green space and access to nature is necessary here in South Oxnard, especially given that our coast has been lined and occupied by industrial sites as compared to our neighboring coastal towns. CAWS has been collaborating with OBRAP partners, specifically TNC, to influence the public access portion of OBRAP and community members have expressed interest in more access points, walking and biking paths, along with tables and shade for families. If partnering with the USFW means wildlife protection and increased public access to Ormond Beach, we would be supportive of a refuge similar to the San Diego South Bay Wildlife. My main question and concern here today would be that we would want the refuge to be as large as possible to both serve the green space needs of community members as well as protect the last remaining wetlands, sandus, and species in our region. As we know, Ormond Beach and wetlands are surrounded by polluting sites like the Halco Superfund Site, Ormond Beach Generating Station, the Port of Waini and their diesel trucking routes, and the paper mill. It is crucial that these sites be cleaned up for this area to be safe for community members to access. To be asked that these sites such as Halco Generating Station and Halco Superfund Site be included in this refuge area after they are cleaned up, what steps will your agencies be taking to ensure that these sites be cleaned up or transition to clear zero emissions modes of operations? Sorry, I have a lot of comments and questions, but alongside this, there are concerns about Waini Road being a heavy-fright corridor directly beside Ormond Beach, and this can affect public access. Unfortunately, we see ongoing expansion projects still coming from the Port of Waini and we all know that this has diesel deadly pollution and the traffic also makes it unsafe to access OBRAP area, making it harder for families to safely access this for multiple reasons. Sorry, give me a second. Ormond Beach currently passed. We saw that the 34-acre Port Glovis temporary lot was currently passed and I was reading the port's 10-year plan where they have additionally proposed a 240-acre port storage site right next to the OBRAP area. So my question would be, how would this safety issue with the pollution be mitigated by your agencies? And what areas are planned to be included in this reserve? And would this include the 34-acre port temporary site? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Douglas Portillo. I'm a 36-year resident of Oxnard and I've been a volunteer that's worked with Surf Rider Foundation, the Nature Conservancy, and a local charity called Shelter Care Resources, and a grassroots organization called the Oxen Grassroots. Volunteers that I founded, I'm a homeless advocate and there's a huge homeless population in South Oxnard. The encampment at Halco was mitigated and affected in November of last year. There were 75 people there. And it's just a confluence of ecological disaster with Halco. The homeless issue, crime issue, and endangered species in sensitive habitat, kind of all kind of converging in one spot. So it's very unique in one sense that presents all those challenges. It's also a great opportunity and I really look forward to the fish and wildlife coming in and they have much more resources to stabilize this area and assure the protection of these very sensitive species. We took out 80 tons of garbage out of the slag pile with a combined effort. Nature Conservancy has been terrific in striking that balance between humanity with having a homeless population so close to their protected habitat. You can't access the slag pile without going through, you know, Nature Conservancy property. So I've done an outreach to the homeless which Nature Conservancy is partnering with an MOU, allowing me access, because it's private property. And the city and the local governments don't have a lot of controls since it is still privately owned, even though the EPA has stepped in. And the last meeting with the EPA here said that they are looking at mitigation of the Halco site and the slag pile, but they certainly couldn't give any guarantees. So that's on the queue. So it's one of many submissions that the EPA puts forward that has to get congressional approval and approval for. Part of the local issue is the crime. So we're going to be inviting a lot of folks here. If this all goes through and we get visitors coming from all parts to come. On McWayne, there's a high level of crime. You have human trafficking, you have prostitution, you have drugs, you have murders that are happening there. So that's a local issue in terms of law enforcement and the city has been trying to deal with and mitigate for some time. But when we start inviting folks in, that's certainly going to be a concern. I'm glad that the fish and wildlife has their own law enforcement, that they can provide some protections. But now you're inviting humans, a lot more of them, into an area that's already very sensitive and already have some folks that just aren't good neighbors. So I think it's very important that, as you've indicated, that we all kind of work together. You know, you've got local folks, you've got grassroots organizations, you have nonprofits, you have the local government agencies and possibly the federal government with, you know, Nature Conservancy and others. So if we continue to work together with a common goal, I think that's achievable. My concern in the last meeting that was held on the Ormond Beach, I asked the question, why not just do nothing? Just leave it just to nature? And that's one of the reasons I've always supported the Nature Conservancy, because that's always been one of their primary goals, is to leave habitat just to nature. And I know that those forces are a push and pull and a tug of war between, as Peter says, striking that balance. And it's very difficult to do. As long as humans are involved, there's going to be some bad actions taken. But unless we mitigate the environmental impact of Halco and particularly the slag pile, we're also inviting people to a potential health risk, a human health risk as well. Because the two studies that were done, one of the major concerns is not the radioactivity and some of the other issues that were more prominent in the past. It's the dust. So they've indicated that anything kicks up that dust, it has magnesium and aluminum in it. And I'm a retired restoration therapist, so that's right in my wheelhouse. So when you damage the small airways in the alveoli and you're inviting folks in, there hasn't been a good epidemiological study on the impact of the Halco slag pile and particularly those metals. It's one of the concerns where there used to be a lot of motorcyclists that would take advantage and ride their bikes there and kick up that dust, and that was a major concern for the EPA. And so it's an environmental concern, not only for natural world, but for the human world. So I hope as this moves forward, that you can keep all those issues and the possible mitigations to those in mind as it moves along. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Pat Brown. I was born and raised in southwestern Idaho. Grew up on a farm with horses and cattle and a lot of fruit orchards. And so I learned how to talk loud because we didn't have any microphones from one part of the farm to the other. And when it was dinnertime, you went out there and whooped and hollered and made a lot of noise. And that's how you got communications. So you understand. I, after I went through high school and one year of college there in southwestern Idaho, then I went to San Francisco and studied fashion design for a year. And that wasn't going to work with this. But I then got married and moved to Southern California, to the San Fernando Valley. And I was there for a number of years until we just couldn't stand the heat anymore during the summer. So we decided to move out here. Well, my husband's been dead for 10 years, but he was alive here working for us with helicopters for 19 years when he died. So anyway, I, my forte is making clothing patterns and sewing and all of that sort of thing. So when Walter needs his uniform shirts fixed, mended, and when he needs new shirts with new stitching embroidery on them, I take care of that. It's like no good embroider in the area. And so otherwise, I'm just really kind of no experience in this level at all. I always thought it would be wonderful to live near the coast. But, you know, here I am turning 82 here in a few weeks. And I've still got all my physical abilities and I can lift 10-pound weights. And I have, this arm just bulges and people are shocked when they see it. I, you know, I'm here to try to help. I know Larry and Shirley Godwin and we used to talk quite often. Haven't spoken to them for a while, so I hope they're in good shape. Are they in here? Oh, good, wonderful. So anyway, whatever I can do to help. I volunteer three days a week at the Aviation Museum at Camarillo Airport and I sew and make things for them and fix things and seats and all kinds of stuff. So, but, you know, I'm not getting paid for anything. So, you know, if my physical ability can be of any help to anybody, I'm free, you know, I don't charge a dime. So, and I'm always willing to get out there and help, you know. And having grown up on a farm with horses and cattle and all of that, you know, I mean, I don't mind getting dirty, you know? I know what all that's like, a lot more than, I know a lot more about that than I do the sand. So, yeah, so whatever I can do to help, you know, I've been involved with this for a long time and it just never seemed to get anywhere. And so I'm hoping that this time, we're really going to get something done. Thank you.
So we have a few more people queued up here in the audience and then we'll go to the people with their hands raised in Zoom. So Zoom land, give us a few moments. Go ahead.
Hello, good afternoon. Sorry, that is, yeah. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Oden. I come now from Sweden there. And I have been a longtime resident of South Oxnard for, since I was seven years old, more than 20 years. And just want to first thank you for this meeting and for opening this space. It's a really important space where people like me come to learn a little bit more about this project and the nature that we have nearby. Growing up, I, my memories of the beach started going to Kacox Elementary School where they would take us on these tours, we're walking to the beach and we'd make our way down to Waini Road and sometimes holding hands. And sometimes in my memories, like even like asking the truck drivers to please like go with their horn, yeah? And so, oh, these are my first memories and my earliest memories. And a lot of folks in South Oxnard, that's how our beach experience started. By going outdoors and taking those trips, whether it be with our school, whether it be with the family. And a lot of us tend to make that walking route to and back to those temples and hang out at Port Waini Beach. And a lot of us actually don't know about Ormond Beach. I didn't know about Ormond Beach until like 2021, I think, when I started volunteering with CAWS and learning more about that space. For me, all I saw were all of those industries, all of those buildings and all of that smoke. But I didn't realize that there was such a beautiful space so close near us. And so that's why I'm really thankful for this project. Because a lot of us need those access, that access to nature and those spaces as a way to breathe. Sometimes it helps me with my mental health where I go and meditate for a little bit. And I know that for a lot of people in South Oxnard, where we don't have backyards, where we don't have a lot of walking spaces, the beach is the space for us to go. And so it's the, yeah, and so for this, I made it my point to have conversations with people about this space and talk about this project. I went talking with the small businesses that are right in front of the space system and asked what they would like to see there. And there was a lot of people who wanted somewhere to play with their kids, the space for children, and mentioned the park. And I told them that there was like this huge vision for a park there and the right in front is they were, the port will now have their 34-acre expansion. And so my first question is, are there plans to acquire that 34-acre site to have a space for children to play? And also, and even hearing from this meeting, make me remember of that vision to have an educational center as well, talk more about the wildlife, but also maybe an education on how to speak with folks who are experiencing homelessness, because it is not an issue that is going to go away. And also make me remember how, what truth it is that people are part of nature and we are going to continue to live there, we are going to continue to be in that space. And so it's how to do that in the best way that we can as a lot of us settlers who come looking for first places to instead reach this dream and opportunities, but move those spaces for us. So that's my first question. My second question, as to you with safety, even thinking back to that walk that I take through Waini Road to get to Port Waini Beach, it can be a little bit scary because of all the traffic that's coming by. And so that's my second question and actually something that a lot of people in the business has asked. If there would be, what would be the best plan for all of the incoming traffic and all of the increasing? and all of the increased traffic that will come from the port's expansions? Um, and, um, that was my second question. Um, and my third question has to do alongside with those things. Um, and, um, that, that, that maybe that's true, the state of like, um, of how best can we be there as stewards of this land, this day and taking guidance from two much folk, um, who still live, um, in this space? And, um, how can we best, uh, start to heal those wounds from colonization and start to feel, um, instead towards restoring that relationship with, with land in the space, this day in accordance to, uh, with guidance right from indigenous folks who have been doing this for, 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 for years. Um, and so, um, thank you so much for your time and thank you once more for, for helping this system.
My name is Shirley Godwin and I do fully support the wildlife refuge. But, uh, like was mentioned before, I'd like some consideration, uh, for future, uh, boundary expansion. Already was mentioned the power plant site in Hallico. But I think, uh, we need to look very seriously about the Aggraman, uh, organic waste site. And this is particularly relevant right now because they have been operating there for quite a number of years. Their, uh, conditional use permit actually expired in March of 2014. They've been able to continue operating without a permit while they've gone through application process. Actually, they've filed several different applications. As long as they're keep applying, they can keep operating there. But right now, currently, there's a new reiteration of their application and they are asking to stay there and continue with this, uh, recycling operation until, uh, seven and a half more years, till December thirty-first, uh, 2030. And it just seems like such an inappropriate use-ness to a wildlife refuge. What, there's several big problems there. One is the terrible odor. Doesn't matter how much they wet the most, it's, it stinks. We go down there about once a week to see Walter Fuller, make sure we turn off all the vents in our car. Finally we get down to Walter, we get some fresh air closer to the ocean. And the other thing is the truck traffic. Uh, something over a hundred trucks are bringing, uh, the organic waste down there. Um, there's single trips today, so about several hundred trips. And this, um, not only is the pollution from all of the trucks there, but it really tears up the roadway. Part of Arnold Road is in the county, but a chunk of, pretty significant chunk of Arnold beginning where the Aggramans are in the city of Oxnard. And those of us that go down there, uh, let's wonder, actually, that we, our car is in good shape because the potholes are terrible. But the city has to pay, pass the road in that area in front of Aggraman. And, um, this is expensive and I don't think the city's getting any kind of benefit back from this, but it's, it's expense to the city. And what is happening right now, there's, uh, they're circulating for public comment. Um, uh, their initial study for what's called a mitigated declaration. They found only two things that could have environmental impact. And one is fire and the other is flooding. So their solution to this, uh, is to put in three fire hydrants and a single, uh, floodwater catch basin, which seems totally inadequate. And many of us that have been around a long, long time are, uh, pretty aware of the flooding. You can't get in and out of there after rain, they can't, they can't even get the Aggraman trust in and out of it. And then the fire hazard, obviously people mentioning Walter Fuller. It was a significant fire a few years ago. Fortunately Walton was there. And reported it was still burned into, into coastal conservancy lands. So these are issues and I would hope the city of Oxnard, as, as from the city's, uh, side, would submit comments on the inadequacy of this proposal. And, you know, in the plan, the future expansion, would love to see that Aggraman site acquired in the order of the, uh, uh, federal, uh, wildlife refuge.
I'd like to answer a couple questions. I just wanted to thank you, oh, sorry, I'm just gonna take a quick second to, um, go back to, I mean, that the previous speaker raised up about, um, tribal engagement and, um, and oversight on our parts and not talk about how important, um, working with our tribal partners, um, is and will be throughout this whole process. And, uh, we have been reaching out to them directly to gather input from tribal partners on their viewpoints about potentially establishing a national wildlife refuge and also just being engaged and involved, um, as much as they can be and want to be on the restoration project all along the way. So thank you for, uh, bringing that up. I just wanted to point that out. And I know that the Fish Wildlife Service has lots of various successful partnerships with tribes around the country as well. Um, and then, um, say that was, okay. Oh, okay. We'll get to the other questions later. Okay, thanks.
Steve Nash. And do people love to talk about Foreman Beach? Actually, we love to talk about Foreman Beach. I like to talk about the aspirational aspects of Foreman Beach. And one of the things that, you know, we have to recognize about Foreman is that it's, it's a place of, a stunning to move the community solitude that we can't find nowhere else. Um, if someone power plant perhaps. So this is, this is most important. Oxnard was, had been historically a separate zone. Uh, there was a burn dump on the beach. We ran, uh, beam burn. There were, there were three forests. There's been all sort of even power plant to melt through, uh, a few times. All sorts, all sorts of degredations. So it's way past time that we, um, do this and heal the, the soul of Oxnard. Uh, it'll be great for the, it'll be great for the birds and for the animals. But it, it will be, most of all, it will heal the soul of Oxnard and the people of Oxnard. And one of my concerns is when we're competing with the mega cities of San Diego, the LA, the San Francisco, that our, our model proposal doesn't get lost in the mix. And I hope that all of our assembly people, supervisors and the, uh, the, and the national agencies, national, national agencies recognize the importance of this for our community. And, uh, I, I really appreciate what you're doing and appreciate the effort that our city manager has done. So look forward to having that Google about the, um, the dinosaur of a power plant. And thanks to Mr. Ewan, that, that will come to be. So thank you. Let's move this forward. I mean, literally we're on the, at least a third generation of Foreman activists. It's just, it's just been way too long. So.
Sir, there's someone in line. And we're gonna, and after this speaker, we're actually gonna go to Zoom and we'll come back to you in the green jacket.
Hello, my name is Bob Martinez. I've been a longtime resident of the area. I moved to Oxnard when I was two and moved to Port Waini when I was five. Um, I'm a teacher in the area and I just wanna say thank you for the presentation and for your time here today. I am in support of a veteran national wildlife refuge at Ormon Beach. I think this would be a great idea for our area and our community. And my only other comment is that I, I do think that we have to be careful and consider some of the other areas, um, around that beach specifically that out of sight and what we're gonna do in response to this that be. Thank you.
So let us go. We have, it looks like four hands up on Zoom. Um, so I'm just gonna call out your name. So first is David, I think it's Casely. So if you will hit star, is it nine, there you go? Star nine to unmute and then please speak.
Um, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I wholeheartedly support, uh, the notion of bringing in US Fish and Wildlife. I think they'd be a, a great steward for the place. Uh, I support all the other speakers and, uh, noting the importance of including the power plant site, the Halico site and apparently this, uh, other agricultural site. Um, I guess my general comment is just that rare chance, that beach has been really, really damaged, uh, degraded by human activity. And it's gonna take a lot of work, but over the next few years, I think there's a real chance to turn something that we should be ashamed of into something that we're very, very proud of. It's a really special place.
Thank you. Okay, next Andrew H. You will hit star nine and unmute. You can give us your comments or your questions. Andrew H.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you guys for being here. I appreciate all the nature conservancy and the cultural conservancy and explaining the project and everything. Uh, one thing that I wanted to bring up and it, obviously, I'm glad to hear that everybody in the community is thinking of the same thing. Um, we're obviously gonna be doing a pretty big project there, but the homeless population is, it's a problem. Uh, and the city manager, I know you, you brought up, go ahead and use three eleven. Um, that, specifically what I'm talking about is everything that surrounds that property. You have people, homeless people that are building camps, they're, they're building structures and they're, they're essentially building their beachside home. And nobody goes over there. I, I personally wouldn't bring any of my children over there. Um, and I, I'm very familiar with the area. I've walked through the area. I know exactly what that area looks like. Uh, essentially what happened is everybody got moved out of Halico two years ago in the slag pile and they went over to that nice piece of property that's owned by the city at the end of McWayne Boulevard. Um, there's fires there, they've tapped into, um, fire hydrants. The city, as far as I'm concerned, is not really doing a whole lot about it. Um, you're looking at illegal water diversions, the trash, I mean, the trash is insane out there. Um, and my main questions are mainly to the community and the people sitting on the panel as well. Why would, why would we want anybody to go out there right now? Uh, it's definitely not a place for kids. You're, there's needles, there's trash, there's drugs, there's feces, there's crime. Uh, what's the city's plan when this happens? It sounds like, you know, we're gonna dish it off on, on fish and wildlife and with the, the very few game wardens that they actually have in this area. Um, we've been allowing this to happen for the last two years. Um, it's, it's like a jail over there. It's jail tactics. People get, they get in fights. I mean, you, I encourage the city manager, if you haven't been out there already, to just walk out there and, and maybe take, I would encourage you to take a couple of police officers with you. And I want you to walk from the end of McWayne and walk out to the roadway and look at the forty homeless people that are living in there and building things up. Look at the, the forty more ATVs, the hundreds, and I, I mark that, hundreds of gutted bicycle frames. There's vehicles in there, there's boats, there's jet skis. These people are stealing stuff from the, our community. They're victimizing our community and they're being allowed to just stay here and store most of their stolen property. Um, so I'll, I'll leave it with that. I would hope that, um, there's a great plan for everybody once this is all done, because it's not a pressing, it's a very pressing issue that I think if we're gonna invite more people out, um, that's a little embarrassing for our city, especially being that South Oxnard doesn't get as much attention as every other community in our city. Thank you.
Let's see, next is Erin, I think I can see Kreisberg, Erin star nine.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Darren Kreisberg. I'm very supportive of the potential to some wildlife refuge designation. Um, I echo other commenters in that that should be a holistic view of adjoining properties, including the, the mitigated Halico site and the eventually likely to be decommissioned generating station and adjacent agricultural uses. Um, and yeah, I applaud the, um, partners for pursuing this option. And I hope that the services as receptive to it as the partners are. And I just wanna reiterate my support and applaud you all for tackling some of these difficult issues. And I recognize that this won't happen overnight, but we'll also reiterate that as easily as possible would be great, but, um, hopeful that down the line, this can really go to a positive place that really protects the natural resources while allowing connection to them and also serving a community that deserves to have this ecological jewel as something that is protected and available to them as something to enjoy and recreate in. And yeah, the socio-economic part of that picture with some of the houselessness issues is a part of this that needs to be addressed in both the planning and the implementation. So I would just lastly reiterate that, that kind of the socio-economic point of view needs to be part of the planning of this also. So I, once again, thank you all for your efforts and look forward to this process continuing into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cynthia Hartley. Cynthia, if you can press star nine.
Say, did that work?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, awesome. Um, so this is Cynthia. I am the lead for Ventura Audubon Shorebird Recovery Program. Uh, we do the nest monitoring for soy clovers and it's turned at Ormon Beach and we've done it for about 20 years off and on. I'm really excited about the prospect of Ormon becoming a part of the national wildlife refuge system. And my hope is that this means there will be better protection for nesting clovers in turns than we currently have. This week we lost our first soy clover nest to human take. Um, so they took the eggs, uh, whoever did it covered it up by trail camera before they took the eggs, so we couldn't see it happening. And ironically, we discovered this last Saturday on Earth Day. Um, there just isn't enough oversight of the public. We have enough funding that we can check nests about once a week. So that means there are a lot of days when nests are unprotected. We, we've just seen over the years that people do a lot of bad stuff when they think no one is watching and no one cares. And, um, you know, essentially there really just needs to be nearly a daily presence or of some kind of authority. Um, other, otherwise people just do crazy stuff. Ormon is just too big to control just from the access points. Uh, I think if we could control this element plus all of the other disturbances that we've been talking about tonight, I, I really do think we could make a big difference on, um, nesting success for these birds. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Merrill, if you can hit, there you go, star nine, please speak.
Thank you. Um, my question's kind of very specific. I have seen not addressed in this meeting, but, and the map was not clear because it didn't have the entire key legible. Uh, I've heard in other places that there's, uh, that the access to the beach at, at the end of Arnold Road where Walter lives might be cut off. And I don't know if that's true or if it is true, why it would be? Because that's, that's a beautiful end of the beach that, uh, should be, should rain accessible. Thank you.
Um, thank you. I can address that. In the restoration plan, it describes, uh, conceptual, um, visitor amenities at Arnold Road, which would continue, um, to provide public access at the end of Arnold Road. The reason that the parking would have to be reconfigured is that the Navy includes a buffer that actually goes out into the middle of the Arnold Road at that location at, um, where the parking is now. So their request is that the parking is moved away outside of their security buffer, uh, onto the other side of the road. So there's still, design details need to be worked out, but the intention is to still allow access at the end of Arnold Road. Okay, so two more for Zoom and then we'll come back to this room. Um, there's a caller next, your phone number ends in zero three seven seven. Please press star nine and speak. The caller with the phone number ending in zero three seven seven. You're on. Okay, we're gonna come back to you. Uh, next is Daniella. You're up, star nine, and please speak.
Pardon, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes, my name is Daniella Aguirre. And, um, I, I want to, um, say I appreciate, um, all you guys, all of what you're doing, um, for. And um, I, I want to um, say I appreciate um, all you guys, all of what you're doing um, for raising awareness of the Ormond wetlands. Um, that of course do need um, more, more supportive protection um, for the snowy plovers and and um, all the other endangered species. Um, I want to say, um, when, when there was the EPA meeting um, regarding the Halico Superfund Site that's like super close to the wetlands. Um, um, the EPA stated that, that the, that the, that all the chemicals that were dumped there are most more, more than likely um, um, being um, being like kind of spilled, like kind of leaked on down to the, to the waterbed and and so if it's leaked down to the waterbed, it's a fatal underground, it's probably um, caused a lot of contamination to all of the surrounding like and far ways on the land and even the wetlands. So like us other um, public speakers that spoke here tonight, what, what would be done in, in um, what, what could we do to um can bring up that concern to, to clean up the, the, the um, the Halico Superfund Site since it's been delayed a lot, a lot of years already. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try um, the caller whose phone number ends in, I think it's zero three seven seven. If you are still with us, if you hit star nine, you can address. Okay, so uh, green vest, I think it's green. You're up. The other green vest.
Good evening. First of all, thanks very much for convening this meeting today. My name is Mike Stubblefield. I'm the former longtime chapter chair of the Loses Pipers Chapter of the Sierra Club Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties. My wife Janice Department is still the longtime chair of the Environmental Coalition of Ventura County. Janice and I have been walking at this beach for over twenty years. A lot. So we love this beach very, very much. So we're really grateful that this has finally happened. Uh, that it's going to get some protection. That's really all I wanted to say was, we really appreciate you guys doing this. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Roy Prince and um Carmen Ramirez loved Ormond Beach. She loved nature. She loved wildlife. Um, I don't know anyone that had that kind of pattern recognition that Carmen had where she would see something in the field or something flying and she knew what it was. And uh, I know that she uh she'd be delighted that this process is moving in the direction of continuing tonight. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Laura Hernandez. I'm on the Port Juani City Council and my comments tonight are not reflective of the council, but I'm uh here tonight to share with you that uh, the city of Port Juani, while Ormond Beach is not within our jurisdiction, we have a vested interest in making sure it's protected. Our residents walk on that beach, our visitors come to observe um, the nature and wildlife um, from Ormond Beach. And what I wanted to suggest um is while the plans are great, I know they're going to be long term and it'll be a while before we see some um, results from these plans. Um, and I do thank the city of Oxnard and the Nature Conservancy and the Coastal Conservancy and all the, the partners uh, for the hard work that they are doing um, to protect Ormond Beach. But I'm concerned about the short term and I would like to see a collaborative effort of all the interests that there are in Ormond Beach come together and have regular meetings, bring in the county continuum of care program, talk to them about the homeless issues. And I know we don't need more committees and we don't need more things to do, but this is so important. Um, my background is emergency management and when I look at Ormond Beach, I think that that location, I think we need to declare a local emergency because it is that serious of a problem that it's not going to be solved by a long-term plan. It's not going to be solved by different agencies trying to abate the homeless problem, postal um, workers trying to clean the beach. It has to happen through a collaborative effort. So that would be my suggestion. I'd be happy to be part of that uh, working with all the, the partners who are involved. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to make a few comments and then I'll hand it off to see if there are other comments um in response to, and I'm just going to give some sort of broad responses. Because most of the questions, comments actually aren't necessarily about the, the focus of tonight's topic, but I will start there. And I just want to reiterate, please do not leave this meeting or print in the VC Star. Reporters here from the VC Star that US Fish and Wildlife is doing this. Please leave this meeting and tell people that the partners have determined that that is the best path to take and that we are requesting US Fish and Wildlife to examine this and hopefully will, will uh, in the end, the outcome will be that they ultimately decide to do this. So I just want to be clear. It's, it's not a foregone conclusion. Uh, next is um when I hear the grander vision for expanding the property and I appreciate that from uh, primarily from the environmental view. But as the city manager and as a local government, that worries me a little bit when we're talking so nonchalantly about acquiring private property. So um, there are different ways to get properties into um, land trusts, um, but they all require funding. And it can be amazing partners that we have here who, who purchased the land or could be an individual big time donor. Um, but we as the government can't just go and acquire people's private property so easily. So I worry about hearing you can put this property, that property in the map. It's, it's, we're just the city of Oakland. We're not the British Empire. So I want to be, I want to caution people about expanding the map. Um, the issues that were raised about traffic in the port. Those are issues that we will have to work through as the port progresses and, and we progress. It's nothing we can just say um, wave a wand and, and make it the way everybody might want it or not want it. With the homeless crisis, I just want to remind everyone that is first and foremost a statewide crisis. And unfortunately becoming um, expanding across the nation in many places. It is, it is um at least at the human level, it is not any more or any less important here than the river bottom or any other area or neighborhood in our city. And I, I just, I mean, I just want to address it head on. We are not in the business of just picking people up wholesale and removing them somewhere else, especially since the federal courts have argued that that's not legal. So the ultimate, ultimate problem for any homeless issue, whether it's Oxnard or anywhere else in California, is some form of housing. And we in Oxnard are making great progress at that. City Ventura is making great progress, even, I shouldn't say even, and the city of Thousand Oaks is actually making progress on that front. They are. Uh, and there are ten cities in the county, and I've just named three. That are making genuine progress in terms of being able to actually house uh, some of the homeless people. So that is a long process, a work in progress, and we will continue that. Halico, as many of you know, is a US EPA Superfund Site. They were here several months ago. And the good news is with the um the uh, recent administration in the White House, I believe they reinjected funding into EPA. So they're back on track with Halico. So they're the, the point uh, agency and the experts and they're working on that. Um, so with that, I'm going to hand it over and see if you have any other comments about what we're doing.
I, no, I don't have any other comments other than to just again, thank everyone for all of those really uh, insightful comments and questions that you all had. Um, yeah, this is a pretty special place. Um, and all of your dedication always shows that.
So I want to close with one more comment, which is, I know this is, it says the partners. Um, the cities, we, we're the bureaucrats that we have to process this and we obviously have stake in it, but we wouldn't be here today if it weren't for the actual partners and the community. Um, of, of everyone, I think they've done more to make this a reality than the cities. I really want to acknowledge that. Uh, we've done the least amount of work. But when it comes to the bureaucratic part, we'll do it, we'll do the, the most when it comes to fishing wildlife in terms of arranging the paperwork. So our turn will come too, but I really want to thank the uh, partners here and the community members who have not taken your foot off the pedal on this one. Thank you very much. the uh, partners here and the community members who have not taken your foot off the pedal on this one. Thank you very much.